Okay, it appears as though we are live, so welcome everyone to day five of these public hearings. Just a note, Council McCollum will be joining a little late this morning. She had something else she had to do first thing, but she shouldn't be too long. And as I have every day, I'd like to begin this day of the public hearing by acknowledging that the town of Canmore is located within the Treaty VII region of southern Alberta. And in the spirit of reconciliation, I acknowledge and appreciate that I live, work, and play in the traditional territories and home of the Hiyahe Nakota Nations, which includes the Beerspa, Wesley, and Chiniki bands, also the Blackfoot Confederacy, which includes the Sixika, Kainai, and Picani, and the Tsutseena Nation, and as well the Region Three Matee Nation. At this time, I will call the public hearing back to order. And the order will be very much like it has been previous days. There's one, one small tweak. When we break for lunch midday, we'll be taking an hour and a half break as the council needs to convene as the committee of the whole for a very short meeting at one o'clock. So with that, I will turn to the list of speakers. And hopefully, everybody's on the list, is in the room. The first speaker registered for today is Brian Talbot. I would ask that Brian join in now.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you bet.
Perfect. My name is Brian Talbot, and I'm a partner with Devonian Development Corporation. I've worked in Canmore since 2003 and lived in Canmore since 2006. I'm here today to outline why I support TSMV's area structure plans for Three Sisters Village and Smith Creek. To start, I would like to confirm that I've reviewed both ASPs. I acknowledge that this is a polarizing topic in the community, and I respect the many divergent views. It is my understanding that the decision to be made by council is not if TSMV should develop its land, but how TSMV should develop this land. As council is aware, every Canmore landowner has the legal right to develop their land within the legal confines and regulations established by Canmore's municipal development plan. Unfortunately, many we are hearing from believe council should just reject this proposal without potentially considering the ramifications of a decision along those lines. The rejection could be construed as depriving TSMV of the right to reasonable use of the property, which is a form of expropriation. What would it cost taxpayers to purchase this property at market value? Canmore needs and has planned for purposeful and balanced growth. This is the only way to keep our taxes in check. I believe TSMV has done its due diligence in the ASPs aligned with the NRCB decision and the direction council and administration has provided throughout the process. It appears that TSMV has also followed the terms of reference for the ASPs endorsed by council and have been transparent about the process, the planning, vision, and public engagement. I believe TSMV has presented to ASPs that acknowledge and address many of the concerns raised by the community through the four-plus years of community engagement. TSMV has worked with provincially approved wildlife corridor, completely independently reviewed environmental impact statements, as well as scientifically informed analysis of undermining risks. The ASPs plan for a healthy mix of residential, commercial, and light industrial development, and they appear, based on the WSP traffic impact assessment, to address Canmore's integrated traffic management plan. The bonusing toolkit is a solid step towards addressing aspects of the climate action plan. This project is anticipated to bring many well-paying jobs to our community, will also provide additional housing of all types, including affordable housing, which is an objective of the municipal development plan. This project also has the potential to keep Canmore small and medium businesses strong and thriving into the future through its residential offerings and the associated population growth, which is required for support to the current and proposed commercial spaces. According to Nichols Fiscal Impact Assessment, the project will have a positive effect on the composition of the overall assessment base, with non-residential assessment increasing throughout build-out, which is an objective of the municipal development plan. Of note within the FIA is the estimate that revenue of build-out will exceed the expenses. Ultimately, however, residents of Canmore will need to be accountable for driving the behavior change needed to support these plans by, one, staying out of the approved wildlife corridor, and, two, leaving cars at home to take public transit and walking or cycling whenever possible. I believe TSMV has done everything asked of them and potentially more than what's legally required. Finally, it is my belief that development and protecting the environment do not have to be mutually exclusive. Whether you agree with my position or not, I ask you to respect my position as I respect others. Mayor and Council, I urge you to approve both ASPs so we can all move forward. Thank you for the time this morning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Talbot. Are there any questions for members of council for Mr. Talbot? Seeing none, thanks again for taking the time to join us this morning, Brian. Appreciate hearing your perspective.
Thank you, Council.
This time, I'll ask Richard Daniel to join us.
Hello again, Mayor Borrmann and members of council. Got some background noise here, which I'll try to get rid of right away. My name is Rick Daniel. I've been a resident of Canmore for 33 years and a permanent resident for 19. As you know, I presented last week on behalf of Bow Valley Climate Action, which restricted their comments entirely to climate action issues. I totally support that submission. And so in this, I'm not going to talk about climate issues at all. This is a purely personal statement on other issues. You've heard a lot of comments in opposition to these area structure plans and some very legitimate concerns raised. I share many of those concerns, but I also believe that there is a great deal that is positive in these area structure plans. And I am hopeful that the town will find a way to work with the landowner, make the most essential amendments, and move forward. This has been a long process, and I cannot imagine that as a community, we would want to go back to square one, as some have suggested. I've developed a view on pretty much all of the issues involved here, but I'm really, in the short time I have, going to restrict my comments to a couple of issues. The first is housing. I believe that one of the most significant benefits of the proposed developments may be in the provision of both non-market and market housing, owned and rental, that is more accessible to citizens with a wide range of incomes. I want to stress that phrase, "a wide range of incomes." While we all agree that the most pressing need is for more affordable and entry-level housing, the demand will always come from a wide range of income levels. And if we fail to beat, to meet a range of housing demands, those market demands will not disappear. Much of that demand will get transferred by necessity to the existing housing stock or to projects already on your development, resulting in an acceleration of two trends that are already well underway in this town. Prices of existing houses and rental rates for existing properties will continue to see higher rates of increase than in most other Canadian communities. And there will be an acceleration of the redevelopment of existing modest housing in various neighborhoods into higher-end residences. Listening to many of the heartfelt presentations over the last week, I heard a strong love of Canmore and a desire to preserve its character. But I fear that saying no to development may result in even greater changes to the town's character in unpleasant directions. The ongoing and growing demand for property may result in a gentrification of the town, wherein modest neighborhoods see the sort of redevelopment seen in central areas of most cities with the largest allowable homes built on small law. We are, we are already a privileged community. By some recent surveys, we have one of the highest average household net worths of any town in Canada. I am concerned we will see an acceleration of the trend whereby those who live here are only the wealthy or those who, like me, were fortunate to have arrived at a time of dramatically lower prices. Meanwhile, many more of those who work here will be commuting from other communities. Second, let me talk briefly about the impact on property taxes and town financing. All municipalities struggle with maintaining a high enough level of property value to ease the tax burden on residential properties. And that may accelerate if we see the growing trend towards online shopping, reducing the local need to build bricks and mortar commercial properties. All communities are fighting this. Canmore has an advantage over most communities, however. The potential to build commercial space to serve not just local needs, but tourist demand. We have the potential to hold that mix of commercial to residential properties at a more, at a healthier level than most communities if we meet some of that tourist demand. TSMV is proposing a larger proportion of commercial versus residential property value than what exists currently in Canmore. 27% versus 18%. It may be a struggle to reach that 27%, but it's almost certainly, if they develop the tourist aspects of their proposal, it is almost certainly going to be a better mix than we currently have in Canmore. And therefore, it stands to reason that this will have a positive impact on property taxes for residential properties in Canmore. And that's only the case, however, if they really do develop the, the village center early in the, in the process. Forcing developers to develop commercial properties in advance of residential properties, if those commercial properties are only to serve local needs, doesn't work. You cannot develop commercial properties in advance of the population that supports them. Developing commercial properties that serve tourist needs, however, as the resort center is likely to do, is entirely viable. And I would expect that it will have a positive impact. So that's about all I have to say. Thanks again for the opportunity to present, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thanks very much, Mr. Daniel. And there was, I do have one question. I, I wasn't, I didn't quite catch what you said just towards the end about when referring to the potential of affordable housing on the Three Sisters lands, and I think you compared to what exists already in town.
No, I, I think probably the statement I was making is that the mix of commercial to residential properties expected on the Three Sisters lands is expected to be better than the current mix. They are aiming to have something like a 27% commercial value. 27% total value will be commercial value. In the town currently, it's 18%.
Great.
27% might be difficult to achieve, but I'm, I think we can be confident that they will achieve more than 18%. And therefore, that should have a positive impact on overall property taxes in, in Canmore.
Thank you. I missed that, and now I understand your point. Are there questions for Mr. Daniel from other members of council? Seeing none, I thank you very much for being here today, Rick, and I really do appreciate the perspective that you bring to these issues. So thanks for joining in.
Thank you.
Next on the list of speakers that I'll ask to join in is Janice Ty.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, greetings to each of you. My name is Janice Ty, and I'd like to thank you for your continued attention. You've done a huge amount of listening this past several days, and I know that takes continued energy and focus. So I just want to give you my thanks for your continued work on this. It certainly is not an easy, an easy situation. I've been a permanent full-time resident and a property owner in Canmore for the past seven years. And prior to that, through my lifetime, I've been a frequent visitor to the Bow Valley, visiting my grandparents' home and subsequently my parents' home in Harvey Heights. I'm speaking to oppose the two ASPs. I share many of the views of those who have spoken in opposition ahead of me. Nevertheless, I feel so very strongly about this matter that I feel compelled to add my own voice. For me, it's, it's staggering to realize that we have the future of this precious wildlife corridor and the habitat in the hands of this community. The tremendous responsibility affecting future generations and the visitors and tourists who will come to this area has fallen to us, more specifically has fallen to you at this particular time for this particular decision. And no doubt, millions of visitors will pass through this valley, and yes, they will need services. I believe we have an opportunity to demonstrate that going forward, that we can live responsibly with wildlife. I note the, the overarching land use is for tourism and recreation. I don't believe that a residential housing development fulfills the intention of tourism and recreation on this parcel of land, these parcels of land. It's the natural spaces. It's carefully managed natural spaces that provide the highest value to both the wildlife and the tourism in the Bow Valley. It's easily accessed natural spaces that are so scarce and becoming scarcer in the Bow Valley. As you know, our planet, including our community of Canmore, are changing rapidly under the burden of development. And our climate emergency tells us that we're at a point where we must pivot. Now pivot is a word I'm hearing an awful lot these days. It seems almost everybody is pivoting in one direction or, or another. Canmore must pivot as well, or we'll lose the natural spaces that are the very features and attributes that we value so very much. I feel that the ASPs, both the Three Sisters Mountain Village and the Smith Creek, with their extensive residential development and associated amenities, with the, the nature of development that promotes the unique dining experience, the street furniture, the secured bike parking, indoor recreation spaces, pickleball, and so forth. They're outlining a type of development that is in a time that has passed us by. Or we have passed that time by. Really, I feel that the, the time for this Three Sisters Mountain Village is it's gone and done. We're simply out of space for both the animals and the humans who are seeking an outdoor experience. Nevertheless, a key benefit of the TSMV proposal is that the community has rallied with this overwhelming response that tells us we need to rethink the future of the valley. It's time to clarify the vision, finding the balance of affordable housing, visitor services, and habitat protection. In other words, it's time to pivot. It's time to take stock, and it's time to find, to find a way forward that's going to better meet our situation of climate emergency, our situation of needing, of needing space while we have a press of millions of people who would like to experience this space. So I ask that you reject the ASPs outright to give the community and even a broader, bigger community a time to come to ground with this. The implementation of the ASPs, I believe, will destroy the very lifestyle and habitat that they seek to promote for our visitors. It's time to take stock. We need to consider the effect of the cumulative development. We can build a better future. Please do not burden the community with the TSMV and the Smith Creek proposals. It's, it's just too big an obstacle to recover from. It cuts us out of opportunities to show that we can do a good job to coexist with the animals and to steward visitors in this special place. Thank you so much for your attention and for, for your work on this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ty, for being here this morning to speak with council and share your perspective on the issue. Are there any questions for members of council for the speaker? I see none. So once again, thank you for taking the time to join in this morning.
Thanks to each of you.
This time, I'll ask Aria Grandi to join in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, you bet, Aria.
All right, okay. Hello, Town Council and Mayor Borrmann. Thank you for listening to me and giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Aria Grandi, and I'm 14. I would like to address my concerns about the Three Sisters Mountain Village area structure plan. I did not read the ASPs, but I have a good understanding of them from listening to many people speak. The town of Canmore is making decisions for the younger generation that lacks a voice. I'm worried for our environment. We declared a state of climate emergency and made a promise that by 2030, our community would reduce its greenhouse gas emissions by 30% of the 2015 level. I'm really grateful as we are setting a great example for other municipalities. We are leaders. We have to walk the walk. If we go ahead with these proposals, our population and carbon footprint roughly doubles. If we create urban sprawl, there will be a lot of grabbing, one of the main producers of carbon. This goal becomes unrealistic, and these words become meaningless. We have stated a climate emergency, and we should act like there is one, because there is. It should be guiding how we are making decisions. I do not think that these proposals are meeting the town's standards. The Bow Valley is an east-to-west corridor. That is why the highway goes there, as it is the most direct route across the mountains. Naturally, it is also a wildlife highway. I think it is really important that we do not break this chain of wildlife highways, because it could impact wildlife, impact wildlife regionally and nationally. Our valley could break the Yellowstone to the Yukon Wildlife Corridor, which is a goal that many wildlife biologists have been working very hard towards. Our goal should be to be more environmentally friendly and sustainable. I think this is a really hard decision for you. But I think something good can come out of it. We can change for the better. Thank you so much for listening to my speech.
Well, and thank you so much for preparing your, your speech, Arianna, and for joining with council today. It takes a little, little something extra for a resident your age to work up the gumption to speak to council, I think, and, and I do appreciate that you've, you've done so. And certainly, the perspective and the voice of the next generation is important to council. Are there any questions for Ms. Grandi at this time? Council McCollum?
Hey, Arianna, how are you? How's it going, Aria? Great. You mentioned the town's climate action plan, and as a young person, I was wondering, do you see yourself, like when you said about walking the walk or walking, yeah, walking the walk, do you see yourself in that plan? Do you see how you can make change within that climate action plan personally or as a family?
Um, well, I think that we can all do something to change, like to be better with the environment. So I think, like, I don't know, for what I've done, like speaking up and like going to climate action, like rallies and stuff. And I try to like, I try to think about like not driving a lot, like I try to walk a lot of places, like bike.
Right. Okay, perfect. I was just, um, a plan is only good if residents can see themselves, can see their own personal actions within that plan, right? Can envision their future within that plan. And I know that your family is quite passionate about this, and so I thought I'd ask you as the oldest, whether you saw yourself in that plan or you could see your own actions within that plan. Thanks for coming to council and speaking to us. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's no other questions. Again, thank you, Arianna, and have a great day.
Okay, bye.
Bye-bye. This time, I'll ask that Rin Lazar join in.
Hello. I'm a little humble to go after Aria, but thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak. My name's Rin Lazar. I've been a Canmore resident permanently for only the last three and a half years. I would like to state that I have read the Smith Creek and Three Sisters Village ASPs brought forth by TSMV, and I oppose ASP, both ASPs, as I believe they fail to fundamentally address areas of key concern and instead paint a colorful and broad-stroke picture full of ideas and potential opportunities for proposed development in the future for the Bow Valley. The guiding principles and strategies outlined in the 2016 municipal development plan speak to the importance of maintaining a strong sense of community and identity, showing leadership and environmental stewardship and economic sustainability while nurturing civic engagement and leadership. I believe what Three Sisters Mountain Village is proposing in its ASPs fails to support this vision and compromises the ecological and social integrity of the community. The February 2020 approval of the Smiths Creek Wildlife Corridor opened the doors for this proposal, these proposals to come forward. However, this approval failed to recognize legitimate concerns caused by the NDP in 2018 and was in disregard of the transparency, of transparency in community engagement. Even you as council were not consulted nor included in the behind closed decision-making process that set us on this path to define what the future development in the Bow Valley looks like. This decision on the ASPs is one that will affect future generations and define the future of this valley. We've heard many specialists and scientists in field of ecology, engineering, and biology, and a plethora of others concerned about the proposed ASPs. I'm a geographer in watershed science and have studied the cumulative effects of human activity on water quality. Similar to wildlife biology and landscape ecology, cumulative effect studies in watersheds examine the association between environmental variables and multiple scales and scopes of human activity. What science has proven on multiple scales and diverse ecosystems is that human activity on the landscape has cumulative effects on ecosystem integrity, whether aquatic or terrestrial. In the ASPs for TSB, I have questions about the master drainage plan for stormwater management on the developable lands. This includes the runoff hydrographs that were developed for the basins. As I wonder about the immediate, immediate effects of impervious cover on the developable lands area and what that will result in when runoff and flash flooding this happens. They described the soils, subsurface, marine, and fluvial deposits, but I didn't read anything about topsoil analysis or soil carbon composition. It's unclear if the model included storage of water and vegetation and both above-ground mass and water holding capacity through soil carbon content, and how removal of the storage can affect runoff. With slopes ranging from 2 to 25 degrees in areas of development with unknown estimated proportions of impervious cover, we can only speculate on the overland flow in, of the proposed, or into the proposed ponds. But with climate change altering the magnitude and frequency of events, the potential discharge releases into the Bow River during large precipitation events or warming events may threaten river water quality due to sediment loads and contaminants or pollutants deposited into the river by runoff from impervious cover on the landscape. I believe these are important questions that need to be addressed to understand the cumulative, or cumulative downstream effects in the Bow River. The other key concerns I have are in regards to the wildlife corridor and species conservation. But on the record, I would like to state that I'm extremely concerned about the lack of indigenous consultation, liabilities that arise with proposed development on undermined lands, wildfire risk, affordable housing challenges in the community, and the commitment to community, which have each been spoken to in detail by speakers before me. However, I will stick with a little of what I know about and tell a story of that, that speaks more to our connection to this place. On one of my many bike rides, pondering what TSMV means to me, I found myself feeling voiceless as I rode through Stewart Creek and Three Sisters Seen Houses, empty and void of community, seeing more blinds drawn and lights out rather than lights on. What currently exists in Three Sisters Village is a model that says Canmore is a great place to visit, buy a house, and weekend or vacation here. But how does this build our sense of community in the long term? The Bow Valley and Canmore specifically are situated in an important wildlife corridor, which, which research has shown, and you know, to be of ecological significance for the preservation of apex species such as grizzly bear and gray wolf. and you know, to be of ecological significance for the preservation of apex species such as grizzly bear and gray wolf. Research shows that this relationship between human activity and wildlife diversity and abundance is significantly affected by increasing disturbance on the landscape. ASPs allow for this human footprint to grow in the Bow Valley to an unprecedented scale in a corridor that will inevitably be overwhelmed with human activity. While riding through the undeveloped golf courses past summer on my way to harvest some raspberries and strawberries, I met a man who describes his experience living and vacationing with wildlife in Stewart Creek. In context, I'd seen a few fresh piles of bear scat on the trail, and the man was out walking. So as a precautionary precautionary measure, I had asked if he had seen the bear up foraging. His response was that whenever he sees wildlife, he just calls the emergency number in the town or a conservation officer, come out and they deal with it. He said that's how they manage animals that are a nuisance in the area when wildlife is in there, meaning people's space. Sue with that and ponder what that means for the future of wildlife in the area. My response to him, though curt, was that maybe they should have given the emergency number to the bear so he could have called someone when part of his home range was stripped away from him and paved over. TSMV or TSMB mentions adaptive management strategies to deal with living corridors and human wildlife conflict. The town of Canmore has done some great work through supporting initiatives for the education and infrastructure mitigation. However, we still have issues on how people respect the respect the landscape and wildlife, whether it be litter, light, or noise pollution. Doubling the population poses significant risks to excel these challenges beyond what we see on the weekend visitation on what weekend visitation looked like. Also, we know that some of these strategies are funded by the Alberta provincial government, and their priorities and funding for things such as conservation officers and facilities management shift with each election. Shouldn't we, as humans, take responsibility for our decisions to urbanize landscapes? Be preventative in our approach and apply the precautionary principle to development so that we can prevent further displacement of wildlife from their preferred habitats? I've only lived in Canmore for three and a half years, like I said. Like most people that are fortunate enough to call Canmore home, I'm a transplant living a place I've dreamed about living for my entire life. I spent my childhood existing in the mountains, learning my place in this tremendous landscape, being humbled by all of it. What I do know is that the bears were here first, that all of the wildlife was here first, and that we, our actions, are the nuisance. When decisions are made to strip the landscape of its vegetation and alter habitat, we are responsible for the loss of life and the loss of ecosystem services. You as a council have something or have the opportunity to do something great. You have the opportunity to be leaders in defining what development is in a valley that deserves protecting, in a place that everyone wants to be, but reality says not everyone can be. The scale of the Smith Creek and Three Sisters Village ASPs threatens this valley and this valley deserves better. The urban growth boundary is vital for the preservation of habitat and wildlife, and you have the opportunity to say no to suburban sprawl by not expanding the boundary. It is known that undermining poses significant risk to land stability, that watersheds and landscapes are more important than people and profit, and that developers have little connection to this place, so they would understand the value of the landscape outside of their bank accounts. This community deserves to be a community that has its concerns addressed and be represented by a council that hears what is being asked and thinks about the future generations and the legacy that will be left. I've heard so many people say that this decision is a difficult one. But for me, and maybe that's just being like not there long enough, but I don't understand how it's difficult to demand better for future generations.
You're approaching your nine minute time check.
Thank you, and for the landscape that supports us. I know my time here in the valley is limited for numerous reasons, but I also know that this decision will have unlimited consequences on generations that follow. Thank you for your time.
I thank you very much, Ms. Lazar. Are there questions from council? The speaker? I've seen them. Again, thank you for taking the time to join in this morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
This time I will ask Melissa J. to join in.
Tonsay, Kewau, Nia, Dr. Melissa J., Canmore, O'Jania. Hello, I hope you're well. I'm Dr. Melissa J. I live and work in Canmore. And I thank you for creating space and time for us to share perspectives on the two area structure plans. I use she/her pronouns and am Indigenous, a Niheo Cree Métis woman, a member of the Métis Nation of Alberta, a registered psychologist, an assistant professor at Athabasca University, as well as the National Indigenous Director of the Canadian Counseling and Psychotherapy Association. I introduce myself in this way to share that while I hold some marginalized identities, I also hold great privilege, which is why I'm here, to use my voice on behalf of those who cannot. It's been inspiring to hear from so many inspiring community members who have been using their privilege to share their truth. I thank you for using your privilege to hear our truth, even when our voices shake. I sit in many Indigenous-led circles and am grateful to many elders and knowledge keepers across Turtle Island or North America as we know it, who share their oral history with me. One elder knowledge keeper, Dr. Marshall, shared with me teachings on two-eyed seeing, which he describes as learning to see from one eye with the strengths of Indigenous knowledges and ways of knowing, and from the other eye with the strengths of mainstream knowledges and ways of knowing, and to use both of these eyes together for the benefit of all. Honoring two-eyed seeing, I'd like to open our time together that you granted me in a good way. So I'm going to shake things up a little bit. You might choose to soften your gaze, or perhaps you'd like to close your eyes. I'll guide us in a land acknowledgement that will be a little bit different than what we've experienced so far. So as we begin our time, perhaps you want to take a few breaths, just noticing what it's like to inhale. Notice what it's like to exhale. Imagine perhaps that you're breathing in the air that supports all of us here on these sacred lands. And as you exhale, perhaps imagining that it grounds you further into the support of the lands. And we call on these sacred lands that connect each of us, lands that are, lands that are and have been cared for by Indigenous communities for thousands of years. As we honor the history of Indigenous peoples, we honor the land. We honor that we are part of the ecosystem. The earth is our caregiver and has offered us everything that we need, everything that we need. Everything around us has a spirit, is alive, and holds a purpose. The spirit of the land and our spirit are inseparable. I honor all Indigenous caregivers of the land from the Stony Nakota, made up of three First Nations, Cheniki First Nation, Bear's Paw First Nation, Wesley First Nation. I give gratitude to the Sutina First Nation, the Blackfoot Confederacy, including the Connie First Nation, Sitzaga First Nation, and Kigana First Nation. And honor this sacred territory is also home of Métis Region Three. In the spirit of decolonization, my auntie, who is a medicine woman, and my late uncle, who was mayor of his Métis community, have shared with me a guiding principle. This supports me in all the work I do towards decolonization, and the principle is never about us without us. This is Indigenization, Indigenous-led and uplifting reciprocal relations, never about us without us. My heart is called to extend an invitation to each of us, to each of you, to truly spend time learning about this land that we're on, that we play and live and work on, what it means to be a steward of this land. This journey comes with great challenge and a willingness to look at ourselves and the on and to honor the importance of creating authentic and meaningful relations with Indigenous communities and peoples. Perhaps you might consider for a moment some of the most meaningful relationships that you have in your life right now, people that you care about and who care about you. And perhaps reflecting on how you initiated that meaningful relationship and how across the lifespan of that relation that you have nurtured it. Everything is sacred, the land, the people, the animals. You might want to breathe in that air that supports you. Exhale as it grounds you. You might open your eyes if they've been closed. And I thank you for joining me in that way. Well, the two proposals begin by citing land acknowledgements. As an Indigenous person myself, it's concerning to read that the two ASP reports fail to respond to any of the ninety-four calls to action which were proposed by the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's reports and findings, specifically with regards to call ninety-two. Also, the ASPs make no mention of the United Nations Declaration of Rights on the rights of Indigenous peoples. So I'd like to read out one of the calls to action. I'll just read one point in it. And that's number ninety-two. And it's with regards to business and reconciliation. We call on the corporate sector in Canada to adopt the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People as a reconciliation framework and to apply its principles, norms, and standards to corporate policy, to corporate policy and core operational activities involving Indigenous peoples and their lands and resources. This would include, but is not limited to, the following, and I'm just going to read the first point. Commit to meaningful consultation, building respectful relationships and obtaining the free prior and informed consent of Indigenous peoples, and this is the most important point, before proceeding with economic development projects. Well, it's been mentioned that there was a formal invitation sent to Stony Nakota for collaboration. My my humble opinion is that this is a colonial approach, which does not honor or invite reciprocal relations from all representatives from all the First Nations, which I named earlier, including Métis community members. My concern is that by approving these plans, which disregard the clear calls to action, Canmore, our beautiful and sacred town that holds these lands that are sacred, will be perpetuating harm caused towards Indigenous peoples, wildlife, and our climate. We're all responsible for protecting and caring for these sacred lands, just as they've been cared for.
Excuse me, Dr. J.?
Yep.
This is your nine minute time check.
Thanks, Robin. Cared for by Indigenous peoples for thousands of years. So while we're currently navigating a pandemic, it prevents meaningful community building relation relations, respecting cultural protocol and ceremonies, and prevents meaningful Indigenous guidance on any development on these sacred lands. So the discussion is less about if Canmore continues to grow and develop. It's about how we continue to, how we can build meaningful relations with Indigenous caregivers of these lands who can guide any further development in a good way. I call on council to oppose bylaws twenty twenty twenty-one oh five and twenty twenty-one oh six. Thank you for your willingness to hear me.
Thank you very much for joining us this morning, Dr. J., and leading us through a different perspective or a different way of thinking about these issues. Are there any questions from members of council for Dr. J.? Seeing none, thank you once again for joining us this morning. And with that, I will ask Barb Belier to join in. I can see you, but you're muted. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can see and hear me.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much for letting me have the chance to speak to the latest expansion proposals. I share the views of many who've already spoken. I'd like to subscribe particularly to Tim Johnson's presentation last week and also to Janice Ty's today, as well as reading Lasers. I thought they spoke very eloquently. And I'd just like to underline what they said to you. I'd like to make three brief comments. My first point is about the communities that are so often mentioned in developers' presentations, communities and sustainability. Communities are not suburbs, and I think that what these developers' proposals add up to are just more suburbs. And the aspect of tourism in these suburbs is contradictory because tourists do not come to the mountains to see more of what they've left behind in the city. They come for a different experience and they come to to see a community that honors the beautiful place in which it is located. They, all the wildlife was here before. We were, all of the trees and the 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 landscapes were here before we were, and we must have, we must learn how to insert ourselves into this beautiful context rather than retooling the context to to serve other aims which are, have nothing to do with the context. So I think it's, we have to come down to a sense of sharing and proportion with the with the landscape that we have inherited, and that involves sustainability. We have to learn how to use the resources here without using them up and destroying them. My second point concerns the process of decision. I appreciate, I appreciate very much the chance for everyone in the valley who wants to have his or her say in this hearing process. But the power of decision still rests with you, the council, seven individuals representing thousands of individuals. You will make a decision that affects all of us for the rest of our lives and others after us. I would ask one thing of you, that you also consider the citizens' active intervention, the written and spoken comments on the Three Sisters issue during this hearing, to be representative. Everybody. Right, everybody living in Canmore has had the opportunity to address you. Those who have taken the time and made the effort to do so should be considered as representatives of the community. In this process, there should be no appeal to unknown opinions of some silent majority. My final point is simple. I'm, I think it's very easy to get lost in the details here and to talk about this and that of the area structure plans. But I think we have to really look at the large trend that's happening here, which is more and more and more. I'm sorry about this. More and more and more development. Please just say no, for all the good reasons offered by the dozens of people who have written and spoken to you. Although the developers are knocking at their door, not for the first time, there's no good reason to let them in. Every good reason not to open the door at all. Moving forward is supposed to be good. Back to square one is supposed to be bad. No, I don't think so. No means no, and it's as simple as that. Please say no. Thanks very much for listening to me. Thanks very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bellier. Are there questions from members of council from Ms. Bellier? Seeing none, thank you very much for taking the time to join us this morning.
Thank you.
And at this time, I will ask James Young to join in.
Hi.
Hello.
Um, well, thanks for sitting through, yeah, a week or so of, of this, guys, so I'll try and make this brief. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that we live, work, and play on Treaty Seven land, and I'd like to acknowledge the traditional owners of the region. Mayor Borrmann, councillors, my name's James Young. I'm a homeowner, avid outdoorsman, and resident of Canmore, and I've read the ASPs. It's also my first time speaking at council, so a little nervous, but. Today, like many others from our community, I'm speaking in opposition to TSMV's ASP proposals for Three Sisters and Stewart Creek. While I have many concerns, I'll just stick to my two major points. Firstly, I'm concerned about the existing undermining in the area and that the land has been deemed not suitable for development in the past. I've personally worked on and around geotechnical failures related to mine workings as a right back as technician, drill operator, and ground support officer. And while my experience lies at the underground to surface interface, I can attest that these old workings. Are incredibly hard to mitigate and even with effective mitigation can still fail. I think it's also too important to remember that the periods of insurance offered by engineers at ten years. And by TVSM for a duration that developer is involved plus two years. Is merely a snapshot in time with regards to geotechnical movement and possible failure. Well, it's really hard to guarantee the stability of such an extensively mined area, mitigations in place or not. I believe that these insurances are inadequate and that it's unreasonable for the town and its present and future residents to assume that risk. I'm also opposed to the development because of the threat to our wildlife and added pressure to the environment. Canmore, Canmore is located in prime habitat for a variety of unique animals. We have responsibility as residents of the Bow Valley to consider environment and wildlife first. My main concern here is for the reduction in the size of the wildlife corridor. And if I understand the wildfire mitigation plan correctly. The further selective logging and removal of undergrowth within these boundaries of that reduced corridor. Leaving less cover, less protected forest, and for the comfort and safety of the animals that use the area. We're the first stop along the Trans-Canada when heading west into the mountains and the last stop heading out. And what's experienced and learned here with regards to conservation, environment, and our impact through development and way of life has taken further west. Or is taken home with everyone who visits. I'd like to see our leaders and community stand together in the spirit of those who recognize the importance of this region a hundred and thirty six years ago. And move to protect it and make a decision that we can be proud of for at least another hundred and thirty six years. And I'm not necessarily suggesting a national park, just, yeah, we can make a good decision here. So thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Are there questions for Mr. Young from members of council? Seeing none, thanks very much for joining in this morning and rising above your, your nerves. You spoke very well and I think helped us understand your perspective.
Thanks.
And at this time, I believe the next speaker is not in the queue. So we'll, we'll call a short break. Let's break till ten o'clock. No, I guess the next speaker is not scheduled until ten oh five, so we'll take a ten minute break and resume at ten oh five. And hopefully the next speakers are, have joined in. Okay, well, I'll come back. And I'll resume the public hearing by asking David Laskin to join in.
Good morning, Mayor Borrmann, councillors. My name is David Laskin. I'm a Canmore resident. I've read the ASPs and opposed them both. I have a PhD in spatial ecology and my background is in species habitat modeling. Now, as you've likely heard many times during this hearing already. That the ecological impacts of these ASPs on the Bow Valley Wildlife Corridor are extensive and profound. And I agree that this is indeed the case. Now, the, the real caution here is that despite our best efforts. You know, the, many of these critical, critical impacts can't even be anticipated or, or mitigated. As planned, simply due to the complex nature of these natural systems. Critical impacts are, are something we don't want to learn about in hindsight. There's just too many examples of these in the world already. I have an analogy that I learnt long ago and it's always stuck with me. An ecosystem is like an airplane. A complex machine of working parts that we all rely on to keep us alive. Now, every environmental transgression that humans make, each species that goes extinct. Every wildlife corridor that's blocked is like removing a rivet from the plane. The very things that, that hold it all together. And we have no way of knowing which rivet will be the next that makes the whole system fall apart. So we need to treat each rivet like our future generations depend on it, and this is literally the case. In the Bow Valley, we have been letting rivets pop off the plane for, for decades. The system is already under a lot of pressure and there's, there's currently many cumulative effects that have not been considered alongside these ASPs. Approving these ASPs in their, their current form is akin to intentionally popping rivets off the plane. This is obviously so, it doesn't take a, an ecologist, you know, just, just by looking at the ASP maps. It, it doesn't take an ecologist to, to see the writing on the wall. This isn't a legacy that Town Council wants to leave. Here's an opportunity to send these ASPs back to the drawing board to be re-envisioned. And in turn, make Canmore a shining example of modern sustainable development. That, that makes ecosystem function a priority. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. And thanks for your, your endurance in this hearing.
Well, I thank you very much for, for joining in today. I do appreciate that. And I remarked yesterday on the number of highly educated people working in environmental and ecological fields. And, and as you identified yourself, I'm, I can't figure out where, where all of you specialists are working.
The woodwork, Mayor Borrmann.
Pardon me?
We're in the woodwork.
You're in the woodwork?
Yeah.
I assume you work through the internet or something with some work inside of town?
I, I work in a valley as a species coexistence specialist or wildlife coexistence. But there's a reason all these ecological specialists live in Canmore. Very good reason.
Sure, of course. Yeah, no, it's just interesting to me. So are there questions at all for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you so much for joining in this morning. I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
This time, I will ask Rob Kinderchuk to join in.
Hi there. Can everyone hear me all right?
I believe we can.
Excellent, thank you. Well, I had a bit of a, a presentation prepared, but I just wanted to start by saying. Thank you to Mayor Borrmann and council for allowing. for allowing me to speak. And thank you so much for the significant efforts that you've put forth in reviewing these ASPs on behalf of the citizens of town. And just reviewing and seeing a lot of the information out there and just seeing how our community is engaged is just such a great thing. So I just wanted to raise that to start. My name is Rob Kinderchuk. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Kinderchuk family of Canmore. My wife Lindsay and my three daughters, three sisters who are very proud to call Canmore home. I'm not an expert in any aspects of town planning, but I've done my best to review and understand the ASPs and the supporting documents and would like to share my observations as a full-time resident of this town. So my observations are is I don't believe that the town has the information required to approve the ASPs. I don't believe that the town has the required community input or support to approve the ASPs. And most importantly, I don't believe the ASPs align with town's vision and goals. And for these reasons, I urge the town to reject the TSMV area structure plan applications. So when I look at the information in the ASPs and the supporting documents, I just don't believe that it's enough. I recognize that these are required documents. They're prepared by qualified professionals, but even qualified professionals have their biases and limitations based on their own professional standards and their unwillingness to accept legal liability. I also recognize that the town commissioned an independent environmental impact study, which I think was a great action and I applaud that. But I can't ignore the widespread concerns that we're seeing from qualified environmental and wildlife experts that either refute these studies or at the very least indicate that they're incomplete. I'll also add that professional reports of this nature are only really as good as the models and inputs and assumptions that they have. And if you change the model or vary the inputs or assumptions, the outcomes can vary significantly. And I raise this point because as I know as a professional accountant, this is something that's quite significant. And you need to consider the range of possibilities and not just a potential single outcome as some of these reports would indicate. And I think you've heard enough from, for example, the environmental side that there could be significant changes. And again, like I said, from a financial expert such as myself, I know that modeling over a very long timeframe can have significant implications for changing slight inputs and assumptions. So considering this point, I just recommend that for future applications that Council performs its due diligence, obtains independent assessments and tries to look at a range of possible outcomes rather than the single outcomes that sort of seem to be implied by a lot of the reports that we have. My second point is I don't believe that the town has the required community support to approve the ASPs. Again, based on what I've heard from these public hearings, I don't need to think I need to go into that in a lot of detail. But, you know, my general observations are First Nations, the original stewards of this land were not consulted. There's widespread opposition to these plans from a diverse group of citizens, including young people, experienced scientists and professionals, and the very people that built this town. The opposition to this plan is actually also not tied to a single issue. It's tied to a laundry list of issues, including wildlife coexistence, climate change, undermining, financial sustainability, and due process among others. And the developer has indicated that they undertook a community engagement process, but still widespread opposition exists. And so that would indicate to me that this process that they undertook was ineffective and that the voices of our citizens are not being heard. So from this point along, I think it's clear that we would have to reject these ASPs and a more thorough engagement process would be required. My last point is just on the town's vision. Again, I think this is probably the most important point that I'd like to make because the ASPs don't seem to align with the town's vision and goals. If I look at the areas of focus articulated in the town's strategic plan, I struggle to see how the ASPs align to the Canmore vision. Using the existing Three Sister and Stewart Creek developments as a reference point, I don't really expect the development to contribute to community livability and strong economy. But if we look at what those previous development have shown, it looks like there could just be more vacant homes, empty streets, and little commercial development, which is not going to contribute to those goals. What's worse is that we would consider building such a community over such a large expanse of land and an important wildlife corridor, one that can really only undermine the town's vision for wildlife coexistence and environmental sustainability. So in closing, I just want to reiterate that I don't believe the town has the information or community support required to approve the ASPs nor do the ASPs align with the town's vision. So I urge you to send a strong message to the landowner that more due diligence is required. Your community matters and most importantly, that you want to build a town that's consistent with your vision and values. Now, I'm not opposed to development and I very much believe in the tenants of conscious capitalism, but the scale of the impact and impact of these developments is too large and not at all respectful to the wildlife and environmentally sustainability objectives. So I want my family, the three sisters of the Kinderchuk household, to grow up in a town that they're proud of. And I think that this is something that we all share. And so again, I urge you to step back and consider your values and take this opportunity for leadership and change. You can see from these hearings that you have an extremely engaged community. And that was my point at the beginning of this presentation. And so this indicates to me that we have a great opportunity to set the bar for ethical municipal development and to perhaps be kind of shining example for communities facing similar issues around the world. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for taking your time to join with us today. I look to Council to see if there are any questions for Mr. Kinderchuk. And seeing none, I once again thank you for joining in today.
Great, thank you.
At this time, I'll ask Mr. Harvey Locke to join in.
Morning. Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you very much for having me. I live in Banff and in the course of preparing for my comments to you, I wanted to sort of make a point that reflects my old legal training from when I was a lawyer for 14 years doing municipal law and other things in Alberta and my current work, which is basically as an ecologist working here and around the world. Even though strangely enough, my training is in arts and law. But I now have an honorary doctorate in science, so a strange world. Anyway, when I was preparing for this, I was struck by the fact that you have spent multiple days listening to this and it put me back 29 years when I was the lawyer for what was called the secret pause group in the NRCB hearings. And we spent four weeks or so in the Recreation Centre, second floor in Canmore, one J. And as I was reading the area structure plans, I was struck by the fact that wasn't the same project. That was simply not the same project that I was sat through for four weeks. It was Three Sisters Golf Resorts project and it was a tourism project with some housing. When I read the Smith Creek area structure plan, it is a purely housing project. When I read about Three Sisters Mountain Village, I see a housing project with a small commercial note. And I was just struck by that's not the same thing. And then I looked at, sometimes I've heard this conversation about a Canmore clause. There is no Canmore clause, there is section 619, which is something that applies to approvals by the NRCB. I don't think this project was ever approved by the NRCB. I think this is a new project and a completely new project. And of course, they're entitled to do that. But it's a different thing. And the second point is, you know, I've heard the fear that this clause somehow binds your hands or overwhelms you. There's a general presumption in the law, very well settled, that goes back to when I was a lawyer, that laws don't have retrospective or apply backwards. And this is particularly interesting to me because when I reviewed the NRCB decision again, the NRCB actually says at one point, when the objections of the Bow Court Group were made, that, well, you'll have another kick at the can because this will come up for review by Town Council and you'll have the right to make your comments then and the council has the ability to disapprove anything we've approved. That's right in the decision report. And so you can't take away that rationale for a decision and then say, oh, this thing applies backwards when laws tend to apply forward. And I just wanted to make those points because I think this is about your planning authority. This is about your community and you are the people charged with that. And in that respect, I'm hoping you'll let me share my screen briefly. I've prepared some graphics that I think can help you in the last few minutes here to at least get a general picture of what I think is important. So all those things I just referred to are on these documents. I'm skipping over descriptions of the project, the legal provision, the description of Smith Creek, the Three Sisters project and how a little of it is actually about visitor accommodation. 3.6% and 25% is about residential district. This is a housing project. And I've explained, given you the writing behind my comments, this is the passage from the decision about people will have a chance to come back to council. And since such processes could result in a complete rejection of any or all parts of the project approved by the board, the board has difficulty understanding how the citizenry could be more engaged. So let's talk about your planning framework because this is a municipal government decision, I think. Your goal is to have a community that's appropriate to your setting. This is from your municipal development plan. This is the really big picture. A million species in this world are at risk of decline or extinction. The world is in very serious trouble. This is a map of Canada showing you how many species at risk we have in Canada. Red is a lot and take a look at this area here. I'm going to zero in on it really fast. This area where we live, of course, I live in Banff, is, this is a paper out this week on the crisis eco-regions of Canada. There are nine that this report shows. This is a scientific paper, it was in the news this week. And the Northern Continental Divide is how our eco-region is described, number 214. You can see here, there's the Bow Valley and so on. The Northern Continental Divide region is one of nine in Canada and that is a crisis eco-region. And why? Even though we have a lot of protected areas in this area, connectivity in the valley lands is highly restricted and under threat. The most significant threats to this region are habitat fragmentation caused by roads and urban areas. Sound familiar? How is that the case? Well, if you look at this arrow, the Rocky Mountains run north-south. This is that area here of the Rockies. Here's Canmore, under the arrow is Canmore. There are very few east-west valleys across the system and a bunch of north-south. Here's the Crowsnest Pass Road, Highway 3 Elk Valley and the Bow Valley. The system runs north-south and then is truncated east-west by valley bottom settlements. That is our problem. We have overwhelmed our valley bottoms and are still overwhelming them. In the valley bottoms are gravel bed rivers. This is our valley, of course, looking towards Canmore from the park. The valley gravel bed river valley bottom systems are the essential feature in the landscape for ecology. This is a scientific paper that says that, it explains it all. The central principle is a gravel bed river valley bottom. Why does that matter to you? Well, Canmore sits in the middle of the gravel bed river valley bottom already. So most of what is left is actually already highly compromised. In other words, the core is already affected profoundly. To save the rest, you have to hold on to the remnants. This paper came out this week by Whittington, Baron Hebbel, Whiteford et al. It shows P is present. You can see this phenomenon working here. Here's wolf paths coming down the valley from the park. Boom, they hit Canmore, the valley bottom is no longer available. They go to the slopes on either side. That's what's the present situation. This would be if Canmore wasn't there, what's called reference. You can see the valley bottom would be the thing that was used. And here you can see the current situation with some movement around the town and the future risk on these models of it being basically broken by this project. At a bigger scale, this is a map of habitat fragmentation for grizzly bears. This map shows the grizzly bear populations are breaking up along the gravel bed river valley bottoms with roads. This is the Elk Valley Crowsnest Pass. And you can see the dotted line of it's almost broken along Highway 1 here. These little units are all breaking up. If they get isolated from each other, the pattern is the populations disappear and go extinct. And of course, what's going on now between Canmore and Crowsnest Pass? A massive onslaught of coal mine. So we have an eco-region in crisis already before the coal mining and before this project is proposed. I think you've heard that from a number of experts. And this is the vision for your community. A vibrant community committed to the health of the mountain landscape. This project is too big, too dense, too risky for the future of our landscape. And I urge you to send it back to the drawing board and come up with something that's a far more appropriate scale than what's in front of you now, given the values we all hold so dear here and given how much risk they're at. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Locke, for joining in from that far west little town that we're all familiar with, inside the great big walls of the national park. Are there any questions today for Mr. Locke, Counselor Comfort?
Yes, I just wondered, Harvey, if you were going to supply those slides and references, links to the paper?
Absolutely, I'll give you that slideshow. I'll just send it to the clerk, how's that?
Thank you very much and say hello to Maryev for me.
With pleasure, Counselor Comfort. Here she is, she came back to say hello.
Counselor Sealy, you have a question?
Mr. Locke, thank you very much for your presentation. You bring some important context to this. What would you envision if you were looking at this project and you were involved in the beginning, you're saying it's looking very different? What would you see as acceptable? Do you have any recommendations that might help us?
Yeah, I think that this project should be looked at like any other housing project in a town, except that this project is so big that it is almost as big as the town. So you have to think about how it works in your community. And that's at every scale. The environmental scale is the one that I have particular expertise in. So that's why I spoke about it. But, you know, how does this support your vision? People who have private property have certain development rights as described in land use bylaws. They do not have an absolute right to jam as much as possible onto the parcels of land they have. And nothing in what's gone before gives them that right either, as I've argued. So what is an appropriate scale of project here? How do you keep wildlife movements at a desirable scale, not at a compromised scale? How do you think about the unique set of values that is your community? And then this project will prosper. The owners will do well off it. But this idea of this massive scale of development that will transform everything about this valley, that will push the system right to the wall and probably past it, as many people have told you already, is just not appropriate. And you're not obliged, as the people charged with the future of Canmore, to take it. That's really the issue before you. And you know, what's so challenging is in this time, the head of the UN said in December that the state of the planet is broken and the business of protecting nature is everyone's business everywhere, all the time. No place does this come closer to home than here where the natural values are the core of why we're here. And my family's been in this valley since the 1870s. My great-grandparents are buried at Moore. They were here before the railway. And the loss of nature that went on east of here is one of the great ecological tragedies in the history of the world. The loss of the bison herds, all the plains grizzly bears. in the history of the world, the loss of the bison herds, all the plains, grizzly bears, everything. Now we are here in what's become a crisis eco-region of our own making. That doesn't have to be our future. Our future can be a place we're all proud of, working together for. And you'll remember, some of you, 25 years ago, Bath was in trouble. Wildlife corridors were blocked. Development pressures were enormous. The Banff-Bow Valley study was commissioned, it was scaled back, the town was scaled back, more attention was paid, now the movements are good. We can do this, we're smart enough to do this. But this project does not achieve that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Locke this morning? Seeing none, thanks again very much, Harvey, for joining in and sharing your perspective with town council.
Thank you, it's a privilege to appear in front of you and I will send the PowerPoint to the clerk.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask Don Havens to join in.
Go ahead. Mayor and councillors, my name is Don Havens. I'm a retired firefighter and have lived in Canmore for 27 years. I feel very privileged to be able to express my opinion or my opposition to the Three Sisters development plan. Thank you for listening. I'm not an expert, but I try to be a keen observer of what is going on around me. The human footprint on this planet is expanding so rapidly and the biodiversity is shrinking so quickly that it is rare that we as individuals are given an opportunity to try and slow this process down. In the last few days, you've been listening to a huge amount of information, huge. Scientist Carl Sagan noted several years ago that for every modern science, we have a pseudoscience and that the average person was no longer able to tell them apart. How do we sift through all of this conflicting information? One of the best ways of resolving conflicting information is called peer review. What you, Mayor Boromel and councillors have been listening to by all the respected experts in their field amounts to a peer review of the proposed Three Sisters development. You will not get better information than that. Thank you for taking the time to listen to them all. I trust you will be making your decisions based on this information. Thank you again for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Havens for joining. Thank you. Are there questions from members of council for Mr. Havens? Seeing none, thank you for taking the time to join with us today and share your thoughts.
Thank you for listening.
I believe at this time I will ask John Huey to join in.
The only one we have in the next block is Marjorie Sword at this time.
Okay, well, I'll ask Marjorie Sword to join in then. Sword.
Hello, Mayor Boromel and councillors. I'm a homeowner here in Canmore and I'm against the TSMV ASPs, which I have read. Let me share with you why I'm presenting today. While we were traveling in Cambodia, we decided to go to the killing fields. This was over 25 years ago. We had no TripAdvisor or access to Google, so we did not know what to expect. We arrive and my kids run out and find hundreds of human skulls in farmer's field, in a farmer's field. After much discussion, as you can imagine, my son said to me, this happened in your lifetime. You knew about this, what did you do? And much to my dismay, I had to say, I did nothing. I'm certainly not equating genocide by Pol Pot's regime and the TSMV development. My point is, as many here have said, that in 10 years, when my grandson looks me in the eye and says, you knew about this habitat destruction, you knew that the wildlife would no longer be able to migrate, what did you do about it? I will not be saying, I did nothing. And that's what brings me here today. There are many concerns one would have over a project with this scope, and I would like to highlight three of mine. The first is the safety and preservation of the wildlife. In Canmore, we take pride in sharing our land with the wildlife. It never gets old seeing elk, coyotes, bear or birds in the surrounding area. We do live in a wildlife corridor, so the ease of migration is important to surrounding areas, so they too can enjoy the wildlife. We are stewards of this corridor. The 1992 area structure plan approved a golf course for a large tract of the land. The current proposal does not remotely resemble that plan. Traveling beside or through a golf course is much less stressful than being squeezed with a hard boundary on one side and a steep mountain on the other. But not only is this a wildlife corridor, it's home to a variety of species. Our elk herd has already been pushed out of areas by new construction and fencing. The Three Sisters area is one place where the herd goes to calf and the forest there gives them an opportunity to feel safe with their young. The development cuts down forests and would squeeze them out of this as well. Secondly, I'd like to address liability. There's quite a bit of concern over the liability associated with developing land that's on undermining. Jerry Stevenson pointed out the underground mines are not fully mapped. He indicated that we really cannot know the full extent of the empty spaces down there. Raymond Tamala pointed out in his presentation for you earlier that Canmore's coal is highly sheared and volatile. The friable coal has a low compression strength. Furthermore, the voids, cavities and migrating voids can never be fully realized. This is potential for a catastrophic event, so much so that the town of Canmore highlights it in their municipal development plan under community impact. Purchasing a home or owning infrastructure comes with risk. If subsidence occurs, it can cause damage to structures, utilities, roadways, paths and green spaces. Mitigation efforts have been underway to reduce the risk, but sinkholes have happened regardless and not just the two we always talk about. A quick walk in the area reveals many sinkholes. It seems to me that this is not some minor risk. In the presentations I have seen, TSMV has said, don't worry, the town of Canmore will not be liable. The provincial government will pay for all liability that can be traced back to damage from undermining. Well, I do know where the provincial government gets its funds, so the don't worry scenario does not alleviate my liability fears, excuse me. It doesn't matter to me whether I pay for the liability out of my town of Canmore taxes or my provincial taxes. The residents of Canmore, all of us residents of Alberta, will be paying for this one way or the other. This brings me to the indemnity agreement with the province from 1999 and amended in 2013. The ASPs at that time did not have the same scope that the development, that this development has. It's just a question, but does the indemnity still hold? Given the monumental change in scope of the project, does this indemnity still hold? I have written Jason Kenny, Miranda Rosen and Jason Nixon and asked them why my tax dollars should be used as a backup for any problems associated with the TSMV development. Counselor Sanford encouraged residents to write their MLA regarding the wildlife corridor. And Counselor McCollum said there were limits to what the government, the municipal government can do. I encourage everyone to help out the town and ourselves and write letters to provincial government representatives, and here are their emails. This brings me to my final point on liability issues. We live in a small town and we welcome newcomers. They live, work and volunteer with us and become a part of the fabric of our society. A sinkhole in an area that's planned to double the size of Canmore could potentially and catastrophically result in loss of life. This is not something I want to expose any Canmore resident to, regardless of the financial liability. A question would be, who will be morally responsible for this loss? The councillors, the developers, the province, the residents of Canmore, who did not do enough to stop this development? Certainly not Jerry Stevenson, who warned of this danger repeatedly in the last decade. Are we going to tell new workers to our town, the youth of our town, or my son, who cannot afford a place here, to go live in the affordable housing built over undermined land? The third and last concern I would like to convey is the amount of commercial development contained in this project. We all know that residential development is what is key to profitability for developers, yet commercial development is key to the fiscal viability of a town. Unfortunately, there's no vested interest from a developer's point of view to provide commercial development. Residential development is far more lucrative, but not for a town needing commercial tax dollars. Every single new development in Canmore has promised a certain percentage of commercial development, but this has not yet come to fruition. You know, on Monday, if my son says he's done his homework, can I go outside? I say yes. Then come to find out, he's not done his homework. On Tuesday, when he asks, what am I supposed to say? Certainly, different homework, different circumstances, different project, but I'm not going to believe him. The management development plan of Canmore targets 33% commercial space on page 46 of the MDP. The developers are planning 22%. My understanding is that the MDP's plan is above the ASPs, yet only 22% is planned at a time when developers are actually trying to convince councillors to go with this development. Currently, commercial space runs at about 18%. TSMV would say 22% would be an improvement on the current 18%. Yet Canmore has targeted 33%. This is like my son saying, yes, I only did 50% of my homework, but everyone else in the class has done 25, so it's a big improvement, mom. I understand that there are few developers, realtors, property management companies and construction companies that might be against this development. From the presentations you have heard, I hope you know that many of your constituents share a different view. In summary, I would like to say that I appreciate all that the town of Canmore mayor and councillors have read, researched and digested regarding the TSMV development. I thank them and I thank the many residents who've expressed their opinions as well. Reaction to this development has really brought the town together.
Excuse me, Ms. Sword, this is your nine-minute time check.
I would like the mayor and councillors to feel empowered by their constituents to say no. These particular ASPs are unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sword for joining in today. Are there any questions from members of council? Seeing none, again, thanks for taking the time to come and share your perspective. This time I will ask Kat Harris to join in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you're a little faint, but we can hear you.
Okay, sorry, I hope my dog doesn't bark. I'm a little bit early, so my husband hasn't come back to take her out for a walk.
Oh, we'll, we'll get through it somehow.
Okay. My name is Kat Harris. My husband and I first moved to Canmore in 2003. We both have had multiple jobs and lived in many tiny rentals anywhere we could get, really. We loved it and this community and all it had to offer us, but eventually we realized that if we wanted to stay in Canmore, something had to change, so we left. We moved to Calgary and I got a bachelor's degree in nursing. Now I am proud to say that we own a townhome in downtown Canmore and I'm the charge nurse in long-term care at the Canmore Hospital. I have read both ASPs, although I have not necessarily understood all that I read. You guys might want to publish ASPs for dummies before the next public hearing that you have. I would definitely purchase it. I also read the MDP in preparation for this presentation today. After reading both those documents, I don't feel like they align with each other. These ASPs do not seem to help us achieve the goals laid out in the MDP. I agree that affordable housing and in particular employee housing is vital for this community. At the hospital, we struggle to recruit and maintain staff due to the high cost and lack of rentals. However, I think Three Sisters is too far from downtown Canmore, where most people work. It is a seven kilometer, very hilly commute by bicycle. Bicycle is my mode, name mode of transportation in Canmore, so I feel like I have a good idea of what it would take to get there. I do not have a driver's license and I ride my bike or walk everywhere I need to go. I would like to, just on a side note, mention that town of Canmore has done an amazing job over the last couple of years in improving human-powered transportation and different ways of getting around town. However, the hospital is still very hard to access with a wheelchair and a bus stop at the hospital would greatly improve the lives of many people living in long-term care and many people in this community. So Canmore's affordable housing problem needs to be solved closer to downtown. Perhaps instead of working with developers, the town of Canmore could try to work with some of the contractors and encourage the development of secondary suites and rental apartments. I know that at one point, after we bought our townhouse, we were looking into different grants the town had. There was a program that would work with offering money upfront for renovation in return for five years of affordable rentals after that. Things like that, I think, are excellent and perhaps we could even do some education around the different bylaws and understanding how you create a rental apartment in Canmore. I don't pretend to understand all the different restraints and bylaws, but there has to be a better solution than building a giant suburb on undermined land in a critical wildlife corridor. I understand that those issues like wildlife corridors and undermining are mostly provincial and I have written to Miranda Rosen to help her address that. I just want to end with a quote from David Attenborough. "The future of life on earth depends on our ability to take action. Many individuals are doing what they can, but real success can only come if there's a change in our societies, economics and politics. Surely, we have a responsibility to leave for future generations a planet that is healthy and habitable by all species." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harris, for joining in today and for the work you're doing in our emergency services. I'm looking to see if there's any questions from members of council. And I see none, so Counselor McCollum has a question?
It's not a question, Ms. Harris. I just wanted to let you know that that incentive program that you discussed about suites actually still exists through CCHC.
Thank you.
Or CCH as it's now, so tell all your friends.
Yes, I will, actually, I think it's an amazing program. Thanks, you guys.
It is that, I'll agree. And it certainly hasn't been easy over the years to develop the affordable housing that we have managed to develop.
It's a huge problem and I sympathize how difficult it is to solve. There aren't easy solutions.
You're quite right. And in any case, thank you again for joining in today and taking the time to share your perspective with council.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'll ask Alitha McLaughlin to join in.
Hi there, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Alitha McLaughlin. Our family has owned a home in Homesteads in Canmore for over 20 years. I'm not going to read my written submission in the two minutes allotted. It sets out the details about the specific impacts that will directly affect us. But what I'd like to address today is the broader principle of growth for growth's sake. As I wasn't able to get the audio on the previous proceedings, I'll apologize in advance if I repeat points already raised by others. I'm against the development proposed by the Three Sisters Mountain Village. It's not that the details aren't interesting. It's not that the details aren't interesting and compliant and progressive. It's that I'm against growth for growth's sake. In my view, Canmore has already reached and may have exceeded its maximum carrying capacity. Residents are already feeling the adverse effects of rapid growth and so are the wildlife. The units proposed in the TSMV are not designed for the organic and sustainable growth of our community. They're designed primarily for part-time residents and visitors with accommodation of some affordable housing for locals. Further growth that facilitates massive influx of non-permanent residents is, in my view, not desirable. Several European cities have had similar experiences. Barcelona and Venice are just two that have reached international attention. In both cities, short-term visitors have, over time, had dramatically negative impacts. Well, that will sound familiar to you. They include increased vehicular traffic and pedestrians resulting in clogged streets and shopping areas, increased noise levels, decreased air quality, lack of affordable housing for residents, a hollowing out of the residential neighborhoods in the inner-city core, in part because of a flood of Airbnb properties that have reduced the number of long-term property available to residents, a ratio of tourists too large to support local services, and degradation of cherished historical and geographically significant features. In a 2019 article in Forbes, the mayor of Barcelona is quoted as saying, "There's a sense that Barcelona could risk losing its soul. We need to seek a fair balance between the best version of globalization and keeping the character, identity and life of the city. This is what makes it attractive. It's the main feature, is precisely its life. We want visitors to get to know the real Barcelona, not a, quote, Barcelona theme park, end of quote, full of McDonald's and souvenirs without any real identity." And that's the end of the quote from the mayor of Barcelona. My recommendation to council is recognize what is of value and protect it. The citizens of Canmore have told you historically and in relation to this development that what they value is the natural environment for both humans and wildlife and community well-being, community spirit and cohesiveness. You are the stewards of Canmore land and resources as well as the well-being of its residents. You know that, quote, "If you build it, they will come," end of quote. And the town of Canmore will be changed forever. In my view, any benefits touted in the TSMV proposal are far outweighed by the negative impacts to the current human community and to the wildlife who depend on this valley for their continued existence. In making your decision, please reflect the qualities of the town that the people of this community want to protect and to preserve. Think sustainably and reflect positively on the values included in the existing plan and bylaws. I urge you to not allow the TSMV to proceed in whole or in part. None of us want a legacy of enabling or of allowing growth in Canmore that destroys the physical or socioeconomic environment of this beautiful, unique town and valley. Please do not let Canmore become the Barcelona of the Bowl or the Venice of the Valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McLachlan. I've asked this question of a few other speakers and we had quite an elegant presentation from a resident earlier this morning on the same matter. But so I'm curious in your perspective, if no new growth is to be approved, how would you imagine the value of existing housing might change? And then how might that affect the availability of affordable housing to our working population? And sort of as a side question to that, would you, as resident of the Homesteads, for instance, support increased densification of the properties in the Homesteads or other residential neighborhoods such as the Homesteads?
I think that's beyond my expertise. I can't answer that question. I don't know. I'm not a speculator. I think housing stock has a certain life that at some point in time it may be desirable to reconfigure certain neighborhoods. But I'm not sure that there is a demand for more growth. I guess my concern is the influx of people in pulses and the ability to manage that. And I'm not sure. There's a need for organic growth at this point in time. I do understand the need for affordable housing. And I'm not a developer. I'm sorry, I can't address that.
Yeah, I'm thinking primarily of the growing trend of the working population to be moving to places like Cochrane and commuting to work in our town. But I appreciate that you haven't been able or haven't had the time to give that question much thought. And I appreciate you sharing your personal perspective on the ASPs with council today.
Well, and this is, I guess, one of the residents of our community has moved to Cochrane. But it's similar to the people working in Bath moving to Canmore. And then, you know, using the romance to commute back and forth. And, you know, at some point, there has to be a cap put on growth. Or else the value of what you have is lost to all for the benefit of additional growth that results in non, you know, long-term residents that give back to and are part of the fabric of the community.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that. Are there questions from other members of council, Ms. McLachlan? Seeing none, thank you very much for taking the time to join with us this morning. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I believe who's in the room that's next on the list? Rachel Gauck? I would invite Rachel Gauck to join in.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, you bet, Rachel.
Can you see me? Good morning. It's actually afternoon now. Nope, we're still morning. Mayor Borman and Canmore councilors. My name is Rachel Gauck and I am speaking on behalf of my extended family. We are five full-time residents of Canmore, representing three generations, living here in Canmore for over twenty years. We are also business owners in the town. And we wish to add our voices in opposition to the two ASPs, 2021-05 and 2021-06. I'd like to begin by thanking you, Mayor Borman and council, for the marathon of listening required for so many of us to be able to speak at this public hearing. As well, I want to express deep appreciation for our remarkable community. The presentations have shown incredible expertise, passion, creative solutions and commitment of an engaged community that I am very proud to be a part of. We have reviewed the proposals, related reports and listened to the presentations and would like to briefly summarize our key concerns. From the sheer volume of community participating to voice their concerns, it seems clear that there is a hunger for engagement and that further community engagement on this proposal is required to thoroughly address an irreversible decision with extensive implications for us all. The lack of meaningful engagement with the Stony Nakota elders and community must be rectified and their voices heard and included in this process in a sincere and thorough capacity. The duration, the size and scope of the proposals are of utmost concern for my family. In that they enable a potential doubling of our population and commit us to a plan of approximately three decades, given various phases. Our municipality should determine the timeline, the pace and the scope of development. And these ASPs present an opportunity to do so. I cannot think of how we can possibly project forward over such a lengthy duration with accuracy. Just in the past fifteen years, we have experienced an economic crash, massive flooding and forest fires related to our rapidly growing climate crisis and currently a pandemic. There are far too many variables that are possible. A much shorter duration of commitment with milestones to measure outcomes and accountability is practical, realistic and much more desirable for our community. The scope of these proposals with the potential doubling of our population within this timeframe is difficult to imagine. Since Canmore was established well over a hundred years ago, our population has grown to the near fourteen thousand residents. But now, within one generation, we would consider doubling that population. We are already struggling with considerable stress on this valley and need to seriously consider the added impacts of so many more residents to our landscape. And what is it that draws so many to our valley? Through the pandemic, we have seen thousands overwhelm our parks in town, looking to the precious green spaces for solace, for comfort, with their families and proving how very interconnected and dependent we all are on the wilderness around us. Or as John Muir wrote, "Tug on anything in nature and you will find it connected to everything else." Connected also to our wildlife. We have experienced the awe of living with bears, wolves and cougars in our valley and have tried to learn as much as we can about them and to be respectful of their movements. And like many, living on top of a stressed pinch point in this valley, I have witnessed near-miss conflicts with visitors and stressed bears. And I have grave concerns that this will be further exacerbated by the large-scale growth proposed. As a community, we aim to demonstrate leadership in cohabiting with wildlife. As such, we must give wildlife sufficient space to move through our valley successfully. We need to take a strong and courageous stand on this before it is altogether too late. I feel that our community would stand alongside our municipality in challenging the province to support functional corridors as guided by the science. We wish to demonstrate leadership on the climate crisis front and have made good efforts such as the Climate Emergency Declaration and our Climate Action Plan amongst others. But to be consistent, we must also be conscientious about our development footprint. Instead, these proposals drastically and rapidly grow our footprint. There have been so many excellent presentations about the risk and liability of construction on undermined lands and these serve to educate us all. We need to recall the voice of a Canmore community elder and the late renowned mining engineer Jerry Stevenson and take heed of the science and experience of these neutral experts. In conclusion, I believe we need the hindsight to recognize where we have been with development in this valley and the foresight to navigate where we are going, all the while retaining the integrity of our unique values as a mountain community. No simple feat to look both behind and ahead. Yet with each presentation, our history and our values are shared throughout this hearing and before. I urge you to reject these flawed proposals, to consider the magnitude of this juncture, to take the time needed to ensure the highest level of engagement so that your decision protects and supports the needs of all members of our community, including those of our wildlife. I thank you for your consideration and for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you for joining in this morning, Rachel. I appreciate hearing your perspective as always. And I look to my fellow councilors to see if there's any questions for Ms. Gauck. I see none though, so once again, thank you for taking the time to really consider these matters and provide your perspective for council.
My pleasure.
And at this time, I we've only got a few more speakers registered for this morning, so I'm going to push through and and hear from them before we take lunch break, so I'll ask Dan Roycroft to join us.
Thank you very much, council. My name is Dan Roycroft. I've lived here for twenty years. Although my most important work is raising two kids, my work outside the home is to run Zone Four Systems, one of the few technology companies in town. We employ eight full-time staff and of course, as many skiers as we can get to work here when they can. We export our race-timing equipment across North America. I have read the ASPs. I have watched the seven-hour special council meeting video twice. And I've talked to many people in town to be as informed as possible about the ASPs. Although I share many of the concerns of my fellow residents, I want to focus my concerns on affordability. I want to start off by saying that I've only appeared before council twice before, both times to work to support development, specifically affordable housing developments in Peaks Landing and Large Park. I live two hundred meters from Large Development and speaking up in support of that development was difficult because so many of my neighbors opposed it. But I think that my position has since been validated by what can be only described as a fantastic success. Every unit is occupied full-time. The backyard space is permanently filled with kids playing and the whole neighborhood is alive and vibrant. I love it. This is exactly the kind of community I want to live in. And I think that this vision should be at the heart of what any ASP's attempts to build. As a result, I was very concerned about the details in these ASPs around the issue of affordability. Firstly, the mandatory ten percent for vital homes is simply too low to meet the needs of our community. When we look at the pockets of affordable housing currently in Three Sisters, we can clearly see what a small percentage of affordability looks like surrounded by lifeless desert of investment homes. Clearly, ten percent is not going to produce the kind of community like we have in Large Park. My second concern is how the entry-level homes that make up a component of the other ten percent are structured. The entry-level homes make things affordable for the first buyer, but these units go up to market value immediately and so long-term, they do nothing for affordability. My third concern are the flaws I see in the bonusing toolkit. I was surprised by supposed sustainability incentives such as fifteen to thirty percent of units being EV-ready on a project that goes all the way to the year 2050. Every auto manufacturer in the world is committed to going full EV by 2035. So fifteen years after that, what consumer is going to buy a property that isn't EV-ready? They either will already have an EV or they'll know that their next car is going to be one. Why are we incentivizing things that the market is going to demand in the future anyway? The TV fifteen percent EV bonusing is an example of short-term thinking or incorrect modeling. It's certainly raised my concerns about the models that the applicant is using to justify minimum and maximum build densities. Counselor Hill said, I think you are really zeroing in on this point during the special council meeting. The bonusing toolkit contains two fundamentally opposed concepts. The sustainability incentives, although laudable in their net-zero goals, increases the value of the properties and increases how much money developers can make by utilizing the toolkit, especially as things like carbon taxation kicks in. Regardless of the building code requirements, the market is going to both demand these incentives and pay for them willingly, which increases their value. The one-to-one affordability incentives, on the other hand, lowers the amount of profit a developer can make by adding vital homes. Pitting profitable incentives against less profitable ones just ensures that affordable units won't get built. I appreciate that the applicant says that the toolkit can be reviewed annually and adjusted. But what levers does council really have here? If council puts all of their weight onto the affordability incentive, there's no guarantee it will actually get built. As the mayor pointed out in the special meeting, what if the market is there to build million-dollar homes at the minimum cap? The applicant says that they have modeled this all out, but knowing how much has changed in a single year and how much the change in the past decade, how can we possibly predict what the market is willing to pay 20 or 30 years out? I just don't believe that free-market economics touted in these ASPs can be used to incentivize affordability. We need community-driven development, not profit-driven. So where does that leave us? I know the town has limited tools for adjusting affordability. We can't just demand the applicant mandate, say, 50% affordability. So the simple question is how? How does the town solve this issue? Fundamentally, this is about land. Who owns it? Who controls it? The only solution I can see is for the town to own this land, conserve it, consult on it and develop the responsibility based on the needs of this community and on a shared vision we can aspire to. Although such a purchase would have to be amortized over, say, a 30-year period from an economic perspective, the town is not required to have a return on investment measured in terms of years or even decades. Unlike the applicant, the town has the luxury of centuries. I know that the purchase price will be very high, over 100 million. And I know it would raise our taxes considerably. But I would like to point out that it's a similar price in today's dollars that the US bought all of Alaska from Russia in 1867. Canada missed out on that one. If the town were to achieve this goal, generations from now would view it as the boldest and wisest investment a municipality has ever made. I call not on council, but I call on my fellow citizens. You've had the guts and integrity to come before council and take a stand. Well, here's our chance. Let's not miss out on this one. I would obviously present, I'll put my money on the table, you know, I'll give a check for my portion, and I hope my fellow citizens will fall asleep.
Thank you, Mr. Roycroft, for sharing that can't say unique perspective because we've heard similar suggestions from other speakers, but it's fairly unique in the overall scheme of things. And I also appreciate your perspective on the importance of affordable housing. And I appreciate your positive comments on the work that we have done to bring affordable housing to existing neighborhoods like Larch and Peaks of Grassy. I'm looking to my fellow councillors to see if there are any questions this time for Mr. Roycroft. And I see none. So once again, Dan, thank you so much for taking the time to join in and share with us your perspective. This time, I will ask Mr. Bryce Brown to join in.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Bryce Brown. I'm a Canmore resident. My wife and I both grew up adventuring in the Canadian Rockies. We were fortunate to move to Canmore in 2009. We love our home in the Bow Valley, and we're both against both TSMV ASPs. I've attempted to educate myself as much as possible, including reading both ASPs and many of the supplementary documents. I watched council's first reading, and I was relieved to see that all of you seem to have some reservations. I was especially encouraged by your calls for public engagement, and we've certainly seen the results of that this week. Thank you for each of you for encouraging us to speak up and for listening so intently to the community. I'm impressed with your stamina and congratulate you on getting towards the end of this marathon. I've been able to watch some of the presentations over the last week. It's been a very impressive and passionate show from our community, to say the least. We heard from experts about our continentally important wildlife corridor and about geotechnical undermining issues. We heard from young people concerned about climate change and for their future. We've heard from the stewards of Treaty Seven lands that were not adequately consulted. Most importantly, we heard from countless people who are worried for the future of our town. Overwhelmingly, we have all rejected the TSMV ASPs. We've heard in detail many reasons why we should soundly reject these plans. From my point of view, the wildlife corridor concerns at Smith Creek and the undermining under the Three Sisters Village cannot be mitigated with any strategy. Add to that the discordance with our declared climate emergency, concerns about our increasing taxes and the lack of consent from Treaty Seven members. And there's really no way we can allow these two ASPs to move forward. I appreciate why they may sound tempting. More homes and affordable housing promises to solve probably the biggest issue facing our town now and over the coming decades. From what I've seen, this seems to be the main attractant for the few non-developers that are in favor of the ASPs. This really is the only positive that these proposals offer our town and its residents, and it's not enough to move forward. Those of us opposed to the ASPs are not necessarily opposed to further development per se. We're opposed to development in that particular location. Development on these lands is not the only solution to our housing crisis. The best long-term solution is to increase our town's density rather than increasing our sprawl. We have a few ways to accomplish this that are already within reach. The most obvious solution is evident when you count all the dark homes on any weeknight. Canmore already has lots of homes. Many of them sit empty most of the time. Over the coming decades, we need to discourage second homes by increasing vacation home taxation and considering residency requirements. This alone would make a major difference in our housing situation. We only have to look 20 minutes down the road to Banff for an example of how this would work. They limit housing to people who actually work there, and there are no tourist homes. I'm sure they have housing issues, but they seem to have been able to sustain the community without spilling over their growth boundaries. I appreciate the rules are different for Banff as it's a national park and that Canmore's taxation rules fall primarily under provincial jurisdiction. That's not to say we can't start working with our provincial government on a long-term plan. The other obvious solution is already happening. We need to continue improving the density of new builds. New apartment condos and multiplex units at a variety of price points are currently being built in downtown Caninascaus Way, Tepi Town. Many of these include commercial space as well. We've been doing a very good job here. We need to continue this trend to increase housing density within our current urban footprint. We could also further increase affordable housing options by removing unnecessary barriers and encouraging accessory dwelling units like granny flats, in-law suites, laneway houses, tiny house communities, et cetera. Increasing density and filling our empty homes rather than developing new land solves many of the concerns with ASPs. It's much more in keeping with our declaration of a climate emergency. It would increase walkable neighborhoods, reduce traffic congestion, and would have potentially less impact on our municipal taxes. I realize initially these suggestions will be unpopular with many, especially developers, builders and our weak ender population. But the reality is we can't continue to expand endlessly, and there's just not enough space in our small valley for everyone in the world to buy a second home here. We either have to expand or become more dense. Personally, I'd rather see increasing density than increasing sprawl. Even if we did allow TSMV to go ahead, we'll still have the same issues down the road once these properties are developed and sold. By then, the wildlife will be long gone, and we will run out of space in our valley. With thoughtful planning, we can maintain our small-town, mountain-community aesthetic while ensuring that we're maximizing the precious space that we have. This won't happen overnight. Just like the TSMV ASPs, these solutions also need to be envisioned decades ahead. We need to start planning now rather than allowing unrestricted incremental growth. This public consultation has made it abundantly clear what Canmore residents overwhelmingly want. I hope we can capitalize on all the current engagement, passion and local expertise to chart a clear path for the future. We could be a world leader in sharing our town site with wildlife while ensuring inclusive green options for everyone who works and lives in the valley. I agree wholeheartedly with Ruben Nelson. It's time for us to renew our town's long-term vision. It's obvious we have several big questions that need to be answered before we develop anything further. Personally, I'm looking forward to being involved in this process, and I think many who have spoken out this week would be as well. If we do approve the TSMV ASPs, this decision cannot be undone. We must carefully consider the impacts of any development decades and even centuries from now. Similar proposals have been denied by Canmore's town council before, and I urge all of you to reject the Three Sisters Mountain Village proposal again. Local author Bob Sanford put it well. Ask any of the tens of thousands of outsiders that are flocking here to live, and they will tell you the same thing. It's not what we built here that's attracting them, but it's what we preserved. Thank you all for listening to the community and protecting Canmore and the Bow Valley for future generations.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for joining in today and sharing that perspective. And it's certainly interesting to hear another resident supporting the idea of densifying existing neighborhoods as one tool. That's certainly something that has been part of our discussions and visions for some time. I'm looking to the other members of council to see if there are any questions for Mr. Brown. And I see none. So once again, thank you so much for taking the time this morning and joining us to share your perspective. And if I'm not mistaken, there are no other speakers that were scheduled for the morning sessions. If I'm wrong, Ms. Jones will let me know that.
We did, on Huey scheduled, however, he is not yet joined. We're going to connect with him right now.
You're going to connect with him right now?
We are trying to, yes, but if you'd like to take lunch break, and perhaps we can fit him in first. Your call, Mayor Borrmann.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm going to call a break at this time. And if Mr. Huey is able to join in later, then we can schedule him immediately post the break. As I mentioned earlier, this will be a slightly longer break today because council does have to assemble as the committee of the whole to to cover a short agenda. So I'll recess the meeting at this point until 1:30 this afternoon.